Oh, did you go?
Now, let's hope it works this time. I had to download a software because this wasn't picking up anything and you couldn't hear the video.
Yeah.
So, that's my husband, so I'm still, I'm using that for right now.
Is that the type you want it?
Uh, that's not an uh, a multi-directional.
The one you want, is it like square, a pyramid shape sort of?
Well, what I was looking at was shaped kind of like a disc.
Okay.
Let's see if this works for now.
Well, you should get Kathy a picture of it or.
Yeah, she's, she found one that she thought would be good too, it's she's always saying, yeah.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's your on air and on air too.
Okay.
Hey.
Okay, beautiful. I'll leave this over. Oh, Councilman Bill, oh, we do the pledge for a trade. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the principle for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Councilman Bill?
Here.
Supervisor Rodney?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Ousmane?
Here.
I'd like to begin with a moment of silence for Jerry Cameron and Edgar Draxel.
Okay.
Alright, the first thing that we have here is a resolution that would allow me to sign the agreement between Warren County and the Town of Thurmond for the snow and ice removal.
Are you doing that? Okay.
Introduced by Charlie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ed.
Charlie and Ed?
Yep. Whereas Warren County has authorized Resolution two seventy-three of twenty twenty-one to continue the agreement with the Town of Thurmond for the purpose of providing roadway maintenance and services for county roads during the period of January first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the county will provide these funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars for snow removal and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars for mowing and sweeping, as well as ten thousand dollars available in a reimbursement program for equipment upgrades. Be it resolved, the town board authorizes the supervisor to sign the agreement between Warren County and the Town of Thurmond for the twenty twenty-two snow and ice removal slash road maintenance. Any discussion?
Highway superintendent reviewed it, he's satisfied with it?
Yep. He reviewed it, it's exactly the same as the last.
The same as the last contract.
Yep.
Okay.
So, ready for vote then, or are we all in favors? Say aye.
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 The second resolution is to hire a website design company. Um, we've had about a month to look over information from before. I have mine with me here if anybody needs to see it. If you had any preferences or any discussion on hiring a web design, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I'll be honest with you, I brought it to the board last meeting and I meant to give you guys some more information and I apologize, I just got busy, forgot about how to get it done. Um, I think the one that I leaned towards last time was, I can't, can you remember the names of the other guy that uh?
I have it here.
Okay.
What about the guy that is doing our thing now?
Yeah.
Matt Turcaut?
Matt Turcaut, and what was his company?
I like this one too, this is.
And he offered us two options. One was a basic template um, format that is kind of cookie cutter stuff, or a custom design. And my inclination was to go with the custom design because I think we'll have more flexibility in how we set it up and I think it'll look better and be probably more user-friendly for people.
I think it is more user-friendly too, yeah. I also like this where he wrote email newsletter system. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Can, can I just add something to that?
Yeah.
We've worked with, I've worked with him for years and I, and every single time I call him, he answers the phone, even if he's in his car driving somewhere, so that's very important too.
Um, I know that uh, I think I may have mentioned this at the last meeting, I did get a quote from Manix Marketing. Um, after the last meeting, the, I spoke to um, I think the name's Sue Manix. They basically want to withdraw their proposal because their proposal was way, way more expensive than the rest of the proposals. And she explained to me why. In the end, um, she decided to withdraw it because what they were offering to do for us was probably a lot more than what we needed to have done, and she recognized that. And she indicated to me that they could not pare their offer down to something that would be competitive. She thought that if they took out the things that they thought should be taken out to get the price down, they could probably only get the price down to about nine thousand dollars. And she wasn't comfortable with that. There were things that they were putting into it as far as accessibility and some other stuff. And I don't recall the details of what she explained to me, uh, so I apologize for that, but um, yeah, in the end, she just said they would withdraw their proposal.
Okay.
Um, the other proposals, uh, one of them was the company that does the Town of Queensbury's. Uh, and I'll say this, the, the other companies, the work they do, I mean, I looked at some of the other websites that they've done and they're, they look fine. Um, I just think in the end, the, the North Shore Solutions with the custom uh, page just seemed to me to be more along the lines of what we probably need and, and what we can afford. So.
Yeah, I like this one too.
Yeah.
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 Now, he's talking about a one-time setup fee for three thousand, the logo, three hundred.
Yeah.
And then five hundred a year for, from um, the hosting and the S- SSL security certificate. And that's one thing that our insurance company asked if we had, so that's a good thing to have there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then this optional maintenance plan, ten hours for three hundred and eighty or thirty hours for nine hundred. Or hourly for forty-nine dollars an hour. I don't know, optional maintenance, is that changing things? Like, once we get this up, could we make changes too if we have to, or does he do it all?
No, so I think that's one of the things that's gonna be good about, any, any of the options we take, ultimately, we're gonna have total control over the website, so
Okay.
if we wanna add and delete things, I mean, that's a critical thing that we need to do is when we wanna add meeting minutes or forms or just whatever information, we need to be able to do that. And I think we'll be able to do that with any of the offers, with any of the companies.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think what that is, is if something goes haywire with the website and we call them and say, look, something's not working, we need it to be fixed. Or some major modification that's beyond our skill level to do, they will take care of it for us.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I mean, I can't say which is gonna be economically the best deal for us as far as the maintenance goes, um. I don't know, I, it.
I don't know, I think this one's gonna be fine. And uploading up to one year worth of minutes reach board, that's included in it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's a lot.
Yeah.
I'd really like to get it going because there's summer concerts coming up, there's events coming up, and we could really use a new website.
Definitely.
So.
Now, I see you put in here, um, upgrading the website and have a Facebook page and email newsletter. I don't recall, did he say something in there about social media, the Facebook page? I don't recall him mentioning that.
No, but that's one thing you'd want, wasn't it?
It is.
Facebook page.
I guess my question is, is he gonna do that or are we on our own to do a Facebook page? Because, I mean, a website and Facebook page are two different things.
But there's a link on the website to a Facebook page, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking to have, the link.
Yeah, I mean, that's easy enough to add, whether he adds that or we, we can do that ourselves, that's not a hard thing to do.
Okay.
Um, I think we should talk to him about, you know, maybe some assistance in setting up a, a Facebook page.
Okay.
Um, yeah. I think we should go.
Cause we should have a Facebook link, I think, on it, yeah.
A- absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the thing is, whatever we put on the, on the um, website, it goes out there and it sits out there in, you know, the internet, it's static, it just sits there. And unless you tell somebody it's there, they don't know that. When you put something on Facebook, anybody that um, follows your page, the minute you put something on that, they all get notified and they know right away that there's something there.
Yeah.
If you put something on the website, nobody knows it's there unless they either go look at it or you tell them it's there.
Right. Right.
They don't know.
Yeah.
That's the diff, that's the big difference.
That's why I think it'd be good to have Facebook on.
So. And I think, like, if we put something important on the website, then you can send out a, 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 you can do a post on Facebook and send a notice out and say, hey, look, we just posted this year's A U D, or whatever is now on the website, you can go look at it there.
Right, they'll know it's there, that's how they'll know it's there.
So, they'll know it's there. Yeah, that's how they find out it's there.
Okay. Okay.
So.
Any other discussion on it? Are you ready to vote on it?
Mm.
Did, did anybody motion or second? I didn't catch that.
So, she's got the written motion here and I think, um, we need to find, sign, or fill in who we're gonna sign the contract with.
She's asking if it was introduced, Owen, I don't think it was.
Oh, no, I don't think we've done that.
Okay, so Randy, you wanna introduce it then?
Oh, okay.
I, I'll introduce the motion.
Okay.
And with, um, that we're gonna do North Shore Solutions with the custom page. And um, what do we wanna put our cost to not exceed?
Well, I'm thinking at least five thousand because he's got three, three thousand and another three hundred and another five hundred. Five thousand might not be enough, maybe six thousand, you think?
I, I'm comfortable with that.
Was that? You're comfortable with six thousand dollars? I mean, it, probably gonna be less, cause if you had three and three, that's thirty-three, another five, thirty-eight.
Yeah, Cynthia rocks, but.
And then even if we got thirty hours, which I don't know if we're gonna need, that's only four thousand. We could keep it five thousand if you want. If we have to go over, we'll just bring it back to the board.
Let's do that, let's say five thousand.
Okay.
I'll second that, sir.
Okay, good, second, sir. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you wanna let him know, or do you want me to call Randy, or how do you wanna work that?
Um, I will contact him and tell him to get in touch with you as far as signing contracts and getting payment and whatever else he needs to get done.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah, do we need a separate resolution for me to sign the contract?
Um, no, I think.
Or can we just add it to this?
Uh, no, it says here to sign a contract. You've got it in there.
Okay.
We're good.
Yeah, alright.
Yep.
So, I, I, on the blank, I put North Shore Solutions slash custom page.
Yes.
I put it.
Yep, and five thousand.
Five thousand.
Okay. Okay, you know, that's all the resolutions that we have, so I just have a couple of things for discussion. Um, New York Class, I printed it out in one month, we earned three hundred dollars in interest.
Great.
So, that's pretty good. I wish I could put more money in it, but I'm a little nervous, I don't want TD Bank to start charging fees. So, trying to keep an even keel between.
Interest rates are going up, so we're gonna make more money.
Oh, yeah, I know. The more money we can put in, on my Google, let's snow and ice money again, there we get it.
It's not good if you're paying a very good mortgage, but it's gonna be good for the town.
No, no, but it's really good for investing right now.
And, and what, what is that, 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 that you earned, it, it's, it's?
It's um.
How should I, I just wanna say, discussion ensued on?
It's on municipal investment.
It's a municipal?
Called New York Class.
Investment, um, what? Uh, account?
Yeah, yeah, we have three investment accounts there.
New York Class Investment Account, I guess.
Yeah.
Municipal Investment Account that just earned three hundred in interest.
Yeah?
Yeah.
In one month.
In one month. Oh.
That's pretty good. Yep. Um, let's see, another thing I'd wanted to let you know is that there's an adjustment we have to make to a previous resolution, Resolution thirty-six in February, where we, I put in there that it was Warren County, our IT company, it's not. We are getting benefits from Warren County, but our IT provider is Colvin Consulting. So, if you're still okay with Mike Colvin being the person who comes, I just think it should be out there that Warren County's not our IT provider. It's Colvin Consulting and we're piggybacking off of some Warren County options.
Okay. What's the status with StoreTech on that?
We're done with StoreTech. We're completely done with StoreTech. In fact, Mike was in here last weekend and he changed the router, cause that router, they were leasing it and it was due to be done. So, he told me which one to buy and I put it in, and he came and put it in there and he took out the thing that was up here.
Okay.
Cause we didn't need that.
Okay.
Um, and Cynthia checked the internet in here, her thing went from twenty-one to what, ninety-seven percent?
One, point nine speed to ninety-eight.
One?
Great.
For some reason, that thing was making it not work.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can say that.
What?
They would build us the best.
Yeah.
Well, um, I think now we have the best.
Yeah.
I think now we do. He also talked to me about changing our emails here to dot gov instead of dot com or whatever people have, you know. Um, because it's cybersecurity, you have to sign something to get a dot gov email address. So, somebody couldn't pretend to be any of us that have them, like, say, townclerk@townofthurman.com. And then they'd make Thurman and put an extra N, but someone getting it will think it's her, they don't really pay attention to that. With the dot gov, that's impossible to have happen. So, I did tell him, go ahead and do that because it protects us.
Okay.
So.
So, okay, so that means that, I mean, you, Kathy, Cynthia, the assessors, everybody's gonna get it. What about board members? Do we continue to use our own personal email or?
You can if you want to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, what, did he have a recommendation for board members?
No, no. That was just for, you know, if you're worried someone may try to pretend to be you, but if you're using your personal one that you use for other things too,
Right.
you don't have to change that.
Okay.
It's mostly for people who will try to pretend they're, trying to pretend that they're her and do something money-wise, or pretend to be me and do something money-wise.
Okay, that makes sense.
Like, pretend to be me and transfer money at the bank.
Gotcha.
Or whatever.
Okay.
So, I thought it's, that's pretty good to have.
Yep.
Um, also, Lisa was in today, the yard sale was a huge success, which I'm really happy about. She's had a lot of people and they're already making plans for next year, so that's good.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing in your packet is about the short-term rental rules, that's something that's coming up in every town. I talked to Tuck and Sue, there's a webinar at the company that's Granicus, they're the ones the county hired to look up who all the people are that have short-term rep, re- on rentals. What they do is they scan the internet and they look for the ads and they made a list, which they haven't provided to me yet. Anyway, they're, they wanna know what kind of questions, um, that we may have, that they can help us with. So, I wrote some of the issues, the noise, parking, trespassing has been one here in this town because they think, because they're in the Adirondack Park, they can walk anywhere on anyone's property, which is a problem. So, I suggest maybe there be a handbook for the renters, so when you go online and you rent your Airbnb or whatever, you get some sort of information that lets them know that there is private land here and you don't just walk anywhere. And some of the other thing, other things that came up, like plowing requirements, are those homeowners required to keep it plowed? Do they have additional homeowner's insurance to cover these people coming in and out, and how does it affect their star benefits? These were just things that Tuck and Sue came up with with me. I sent this in to Granicus and I couldn't be on their, on their um, webinar, but if we can submit further questions or get information, I can get the whole recording of it afterward, so I'll get that and share it with you. And we should think about some sort of rules. I know that in some towns, they have um, rules regarding how many bedrooms do you have available, how many bathrooms, they're limiting how many people can come in. You can't have twenty people in two bedrooms, stuff like that. And there are no rules yet really for this, it's pretty new. What are the septic requirements? That's been an issue in some towns also.
Yeah.
You're gonna have thirty people in our house and your septic's not capable of that.
Well, it, it shouldn't be any different, or the house is zoned for, or imagine, right, three bedrooms.
Right, 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 what it's zoned for. But the problem is, we have no zoning.
Well.
It's supposed to be important for that.
Yeah, I mean, have, from my past experience with E C, if somebody's got a very large home with a lot of bedrooms and they exceed a thousand gallons a day design flow for a subsurface system, then they will need a permit from the E C.
Oh, really?
Yes, and uh,
So, that could be, okay.
That could be a potential issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there could be A P A regulations depending on which zone it's in.
Right.
Something like that.
That's right, the properties are all zoned differently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, does Lawrenceburg already have regulations on books?
I don't know, I know Bolton does.
I mean, not, not that we're gonna be the same as Bolton or Lake George or some other municipality, but if they already have regulations rather than us reinvent the wheel, we could start by looking at their regulations. And if there's stuff in it that doesn't work for Thurman because we're different, then we can take that out, but, you know, rather than reinvent things,
Right.
start with something that somebody else has got. I have no problem plagiarizing other people's work, it saves us time.
Well. No, it's good to do it, cause there's things I wouldn't, I wouldn't even have thought of the septic, you know, but yet, if you, if,
Yeah.
if you have a septic for a family of four and you're gonna have twenty people every weekend, like, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, what I hear, that's a major complaint, is the noise and the amount of car park.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
That's, that's the only two major complaints that I've heard on here.
Yes, yep.
And I hear a lot of.
Now, and these ordinances will not be for everyone in town, they're only gonna be for the people in the short-term rentals.
Right, that's right.
It's specific to them. That's why I thought there should be some handbook or some sort of, you know, rules put out there, when they rent, they get that and they know that here's the rules, so.
Right. I mean, that being said, I think I brought this up once before, we do need to talk about doing something with a noise ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to, to address a couple of situations in town where people are shooting firearms at one and two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, you did. Yeah.
And things like that, you know. I mean, I'm not looking to have some overbearing noise ordinance that says somebody can't have a party on a weekend or some, something like that.
Right.
That's not at all what I'm looking for. But I have had complaints from a couple of different residents that there are issues and they can't get them addressed because when they call the Sheriff's Department or the state police and they show up and they say, well, there's no ordinance that says that they can't do it, so they don't have,
Yeah.
they can't write a ticket, they can't do anything.
No, they can't do anything, and then it gets worse when they leave because of people, you know.
So. So, yes. So, I think this kinda all goes together. I mean, yeah, we do have, need regulations that'll be specific to the short-term rentals,
Mm-hmm.
but something like a noise ordinance could be a little broader than that.
Okay.
And once again, I think there are other towns that probably already have a noise ordinance.
There are.
And then probably we could start by, you know, picking their brains.
And here, I also gave you the names of these people that are running this, if you had any questions you wanted to reach out to them, you could do that too.
Okay.
Okay, and then the next thing, and the last thing that I have is, um, this local government notice form. Tuck and Sue gave me this. I don't really know much about this, other than Tuck said that what I would need to sign is, does the town or village have land use controls? And that the answer would be no. That these people would need to be going through the Adirondack Park for what they're trying to do. And once they get the park approval, because it depends on the land use of where they are, and it's pretty specific, it's something that I wouldn't be able to do. And they also said over here, like, we don't have a zoning department, and so this type of stuff here would be going to the park, not to the Town of Thurman.
So, I think thi- this is a little bit of a tough one in one sense, is that where it says, does the town or village have land use controls? I mean, essentially, we don't, except we do have one town law that says the minimum lot size has to be three acres. So, I don't know if that changes the answer to that first one, but that's the only land use control we have, right?
That I know of, yeah.
I don't know, man.
But wouldn't that, so the Adirondack Park may have a different number than our number?
Yeah, the Adirondack Park's got different acreages and a lot of them, you know, some might be four, might be ten, might be a hundred.
Yeah. Well, they're, no, yes, the, so the s- the, the smallest lot size is a one point three acre zone, that's an average lot size.
Are there any less than three?
They actually allow it to go down to something like zero point eight.
Wow.
And then from one point three, it goes to eight point five, and then it goes to, uh, what if we, I've already forgotten. No, it goes from one point three to three point two to eight point five to forty-three acres. So, there's four different zones.
Okay. Okay.
And that's, that's A P A, but we don't have our own zoning other than that one law, so.
So, do you want me to, I can fill that line out and say, no, other than a three acre minimum? Cause this property's fifty acres, isn't it? This property that they wanna build on? Can't read it, fifty-two, I think it is.
Yeah.
I don't think it says it on this letter. They're planning on building a single-family home, not a primary residence, on this property, along with a detached garage. The Adirondack Park Agency is looking for a permit. We cannot get started with the builders until we know where we can put the house. So, you know, I don't know how we would control where they could put the house. And any permit applications that the Town of Thurman would require as well. So, would it be Charlie Wallace that they would be getting this permit from?
Warren County.
Yeah, Warren County.
With it's in.
From Warren County, okay, so.
Yeah. To the building office.
They would need to go to Warren County for, for the building permits.
I, I guess what I would suggest is give, give the park agency a call and explain to them and say, look, the only land use regulation we have is a single-town law that says a minimum lot size is three acres.
Mm-hmm.
And ask them whether that means you answer yes to the first question or no.
Right.
If, if you answer no, then you just go down to the bottom and sign it and you're done with it. If you answer yes, then that means you have to answer the rest of the questions. And I think that just means the rest of the questions, you can answer no to it.
Yeah, exactly.
But I mean, you could, you can call them and ask them, they'll explain which way they want you to do it, but either way, I have no problem authorizing you to sign this and get it done.
Okay, once I take care of that.
Yeah, just figure out which way they want you to do it.
Because, see, like, it says here, plot plan, showing location of well and septic system, which includes property lines and all structures. Isn't that something that the county?
Yeah.
Would do? They would wanna see those things.
But that's the problem with the smaller lot size, sometimes it creates a problem because your septic has gotta be so far from your well, it's gotta be so, so far, anything,
Yeah. Yeah.
propane tanks, well stuff, it has to be so far from your neighbor's line, I mean, ten feet.
Right.
And with a. And with a small one-acre lot, one point one, one point, it it that's impossible.
I wish it was a bigger one.
You can't get very tight.
It's impossible to uh get all the regulations in there.
Yeah.
Cause I've seen it happen, it causes a lot of trouble. Shouldn't happen.
Okay, so then that's what I'll do, um if you wanna authorize me to sign it after, I don't, I I only have a resolution for that, you know.
We can make it, yeah, we can make a motion.
Okay, just to sign it as long as it follows the A P A rules.
We can bring it to the floor.
Um I'll make a motion authorizing supervisor Ron into sign the local government notice form for project grants, application to the Adirondack Park Agency. For the project of Ronald E. and Diane L. Foot. Uh I don't see the date on here. Um so.
Just let us date it April twenty-second, if you wanna use that date, I don't look it up, the letter, I don't think it's.
Okay. Um subject to guidance from the Adirondack Park Agency regarding the question pertaining to land use controls.
That's good. And second?
I'll second.
I think, okay.
That it?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, I'll call him tomorrow, and that's all I have for stores discussion, anybody else have anything?
I have, I have one thing I was just gonna ask about, um, I don't know if we've really talked much about, um, I forget what they call, the what's, is it the ARPA money?
Oh yeah, the ARPA money.
Yeah, I mean what we're gonna do with that, um, and I and I think I may have mentioned this to some of you guys before, but, um. I mean, that's got restrictions on what we can use it for, but one of the things we can use it for is expanding broadband internet.
Right.
And I know everybody was very happy when Slick came to town, um, a lot of us, myself included, got fiber optic cable to our home and business.
Yeah.
And it's been really good, um, but there were some roads in town that got left out.
Why did they get left out, cause it's too expensive for them to run it there?
Um. I I think it was a combination of the way the state set the things up, so that different companies got different sections, contracts for different areas, I think that was part of it.
Mm-hmm.
But I think also part of it is, like you just said, um, some roads maybe didn't have enough residents on them to justify.
Mm-hmm.
Um which it baffles me how they ran it down my road, because we've only got three residences in the business on that road to use it, but somehow they managed to do it. Um but there were roads that do not have it, there are people that really need it, really want it.
How can we know who they are?
So I think there's a couple of different things, I think, I think Warren County at one time conducted a survey of um of needs in town. And I I don't know the specifics about it, but I think there was something that they did. And I think also Slick may have information, I will. So I I would like to see us start investigating um what the needs are in town, what residences still need high-speed internet.
Yeah.
And I would like to see us use that money towards that end. And I don't, you know, I don't know that that money's gonna cover all the need, but it's possible that it can defray the costs, so that a company like Slick can afford to make it profitable for and make it work.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we need to start looking into that and see what we can do with it.
I'll call Slick and find out if they can tell me who's not hooked up and what they can do to hook them up, how much will it cost?
It really should, it should.
Yep. Um, do you have the name of the guy that runs the company, Kevin?
I have, I have paper, paper upstairs, but if you have it, I'll take it.
Yep, I've got his name. Uh it's Kevin Lynch.
Lynch, like the pot wrench?
Uh L Y N C H, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
Um. His phone number, the main phone number there is eight seven 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 five four two two six six. His email is kevin dot lynch at slickfiber dot com.
Okay.
So, I think that that's probably the best use we can make of that money.
It would be a good use, yeah.
Yes.
Another thing I was hoping to do with it is put the well and septic up for the highway garage, but we don't have to use that money if we don't have enough, but.
Yeah.
Cause we're gonna get our second payment, I think, in July, so we're gonna have over a hundred and twenty thousand, I don't know what this costs, but that's important. And we don't have any um restrictions anymore, they deemed anything under ten million revenue recovery, so it's all revenue recovery, we can do what we want with that.
Okay.
And we've spent a little bit of it so far on, I think her laptop counted toward it, um, or maybe that's all we spent ARPA money on.
I think this would be the best use we can make of that money.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the other things, like what you were talking about, the well and septic, I think we gotta get through the planning process with the engineers to see what we're doing with this, all our facilities here.
Right. Yeah.
And some of that stuff might be covered under some grant money we might apply for.
Exactly, yeah.
Um so I I think this would be the best way to spend this money.
There might even be extra money available grant-wise for this, because they're really pushing us.
True, that that's that's the other thing, and and this might be the time, you know, you strike the bell at the top, because right now, getting broadband to everybody is a hot issue.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
If there's other grant money and if we can put some of this money to it, defray the cost to where Slick Fiber can afford to.
Right.
Reach everybody, and I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, the best thing we can do.
Alright, I'll call them, I'll call Kevin and um let him know and let you know what he says.
Perfect, thank you.
Because I think you're right, you got, everyone gotta have internet, I mean.
Yep.
This day and age, kids in school.
Yep.
You don't have internet, what are you supposed to do with your home, having to go to class, I don't know what people did up here when that happened.
Yeah.
I know, I heard complaints about people that had dial-up, people had to go down to a relative's house or whatever.
I mean, people do telehealth with it, they do all their financial stuff.
Yeah. Oh, and working from home?
Yep.
Yeah.
People that come to town require it, if they're coming here and and they need to be able to do businesses and stuff, I mean, these people with short-term rentals, they're renting to people that come up and they need to be able to.
They want to be able to work.
It be, yeah, they gotta be accountable.
Or connect with their families, we send pictures, yeah.
Certain, so I think it really would do do wonders for our town.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's important. I did wanna let you know, when Mike Colvin was here and he put the new router in, password changed, or the guest, I don't know if you use that at all here.
Okay. Uh I do, yeah, actually, yeah.
It's guest, capital G, for guest twenty twenty-two, that's all it is.
Okay, I'll change that, thank you.
Mm-hmm, and I was thinking, I don't know whether we should post that outside, where the word says, um, the wifi sign is out there, like, how would anybody know how to hook up to it?
Yeah, it's a good idea, I'd put it on the website, but, you know.
Yeah, but if you're out there and you don't have it, you can't get on the website, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good idea, just put a little sign on it.
Just put something on there, it'll say, you know, what the wifi is, I don't, maybe you just paint it on there, I don't know, but. Wifi. Guest twenty twenty-two, outside by sign. Oh, and I did wanna let you know also, tomorrow at ten, someone is coming to meet with me from the youth, the county youth, about the um community garden. I went last Friday, I have the fence, the poles, um, I don't know, a bunch of other stuff, I've put it all in the youth building for now. And he is gonna help me, he's even bringing plants, and he's gonna help me put it up up there, they have a teller and um. What I told him, what I don't have is youth, I don't have any youth, I don't know who they are, and he's bringing the youth too, so. If you know any kids that wanna be involved, or any people that wanna be involved in the community garden, I have no way to reach, you know, my reader board sign isn't here yet, we could put it on the website.
We need Facebook.
Yeah, I need, exactly, see, that'd be a great thing to do with it, yeah.
That's what we. Yeah.
Uh if you want something to go out on Facebook, send it to me, whatever whatever blurb you want to go out there, and I'll get it posted, there's there's two different Thurmond Facebook groups.
Okay. Okay. Oh, okay.
And I can, I can get it posted on both.
Oh yeah, okay.
So just anything like that, just send it to me, I'll go.
And Jim Liebrun, he came down and met with me, and they also have a thousand dollar grant available for the community garden stuff. I can get the soil, I can get the boxes, I I just, so I'm attending their meeting later this month and I'll know then, I think it's Monday night. Or Monday around one, I'm meeting with them to see if we get the money, he said they have so much money that they, that never gets used, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be nice.
Yeah. Yep.
And then, does anybody else have anything?
What about?
Do you have any more to say, to say, no?
No.
Alright, the last thing we have then is a resolution to approve payment of the claims, um, do you wanna introduce that?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Randy seconds it. Resolution to approve payment of the claims, the total for abstract six general fund, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, is twenty-seven thousand, seven, seventy-nine and thirty cents. Total of abstract six for the highway fund, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, is sixty-four thousand, two ninety-five and seventy-six cents, for a total of ninety-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and six cents. All in favor?
Is that six or sixty, six, oh si- the six, oh six.
Hmm? Oh six, oh six, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we're good. So you said you talked to Matt, right? And then, I don't know, he'll send me something in the mail, or email, or whatever he needs to do. Yeah. Oh, that's usually Charlie's, don't want motion to adjourn, Charlie?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye, we're adjourned, recharge.
Charlie made motion and seconded it.
And and this. We all said aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
When we got here, we'll see what kind of like five forty-one.
Now I'm gonna turn off that, yeah, upstairs and print all these charts.
Yeah.
Okay.